...a year again, I mean spawned right around the corner, but first of all, I'd just like to thank Sarah Buffington for another fabulous job she did running the planter program downtown. Last year was the first one we did and I thought it was extremely successful and I think there was some people that participated last year that realized that they had to raise their game and I thought that this year was spectacular and we have two individuals, I take your Andrew?
I'm David.
Andrew and David, Dimov, who not only stepped up the game, but they took on the three planters between the Bon Ton and Caparella, so hopefully if you had an opportunity to see this, but I don't want to steer any more thunder from Sarah, so there, it's all yours.
When I would ask to find sponsors for the three big beds, I really thought that was going to be a challenge because they're humongous, I don't know if you've been through that, but they're really large and I thought I'd have to find three separate sponsors and when these guys said they'd take all three, I nearly wept and they really did a fabulous job and the judges were also very much impressed, so thank you guys very much. If you guys want to say a few words, you can, I'll leave you to it.
Yeah, it was a great pleasure to actually be able to do that. Thanks for Sarah, you know, for basically such a great opportunity because we always look forward to things, you know, to make the community look better and, you know, it was a really good thing to do from her side and it wouldn't have been possible really without, we had four sponsors that helped us with all the plants because we used a massive amount of plants in it. So out in Burnham there's Nadia's Massage and Bodywork and in Strods Mills there's Yulia's Chrysos Spa, Elizabeth's Vitality Spa and Tchiana's Healing Arts. So they, we all came together and got all the plants ready and just kind of maintained it and Sarah stepped in when we were on vacation, so that was a really crucial point there too. Thank you so much.
Are they all relatives of yours?
Yes, we're all related.
That's a family affair.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a citation for your efforts, so there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Annual Jim Toon Award Ribbon.
All right, thank you.
Post that at your flyer section.
Really? Well, it's definitely how to care of your pets. Where are you working?
Right here. And yeah, there'll be fines.
Everybody?
Wait for them, wait in the pool area.
Okay, I apologize. I'm used to talking to people that are like one place or the other. My name is Carrie Cobal. I am actually the president of an all-volunteer rescue called One Dog at a Time. We deal with abusive neglect of animals and that means any animal that is owned, penned, chained, barned, kennelled. So that means horses, cows, cats, dogs. We deal with the entire state, so 67 counties, and what our organization was meant and made to do, our mission was to help our police departments in assisting them to follow through with humane cases. I don't think that I'm the only one in this town that thinks that there's a major cat problem and that's only one of our problems. But the cat issue, we need to try to address at some point in time or the other and I feel that I'm actually disabled, our volunteer is all, our rescue is all volunteer run, can't do it by myself, but I can tell you that on a daily basis, seriously, daily basis, our organization gets a call to assist. Roth is great, we are here, we don't have a shelter, we don't have resources, we have no place to stick all these cats, the strays, et cetera. Our idea is getting a lot of volunteers together, get donation jars out to the local businesses, any businesses that are willing to put them in, actually specifically put it for TNR. TNR does work if we work at it. So that's one of our ideas. The second thing that I wanted to address is the eviction processes, or I should say the, when people's homes become deemed uninhabitable. We had an incident about a month and a half ago where two elderly residents' homes were, what's it called?
Condemned.
Yeah, thank you very much. Were condemned. We were contacted at 7:30 at night. Another rescue was apparently supposed to assist this couple. The elderly woman was through the area agency on aging. The elderly couple, the wife was actually taken to the hospital when admitted. The husband sat on the porch from the time that house was deemed uninhabitable until 7:30 at night when one of their far-off relatives that haven't heard from these couple in years calls us and says, "Hey, can you help me with the dog?" I can't do anything for these people at 7:30 at night. We have a temporary kennel and although I would love to help, I can't just make a dog disappear. It's just not possible. So I'm requesting some sort of assistance from the borough that when this stuff happens, somebody yells at us and lets us know or gives us a heads up or something because there is no reason why that elderly man sat on his porch with his dog till 7:30 at night rather than being with his wife at the hospital. And I'm not saying that in a nasty, negative, mean way. I'm saying I don't have a problem helping, but if I don't know, I don't know. And, you know, at 7:30 at night, you know, everybody's gone from the borough. You know, I've got this guy with his dog sitting on the porch. I have nowhere to stick it. State police or they call us, which is fine. We have to be able to make a plan. So if there is a residence where there are animals, even shoot me an email and say, "Hey, it could be," you don't have to give me an address, something, let me know. We just recently cleaned up a house down on Logan for codes. There was thought to be 20 cats. Thankfully, there was only 13, but three were dead when we found them behind the washer with other live ones laying on top of it. We have a major problem in this town and it's not just here, like at least don't think that. Good lord, it's everywhere and cats are really, really bad right now. One other issue real quickly that I wanted to address, and I don't know if anybody else has had an issue with this or not, but is that we swan to humane calls. We will assist our police departments any way possible. We have offered every police department in this county an outdoor kennel. Some can't have one because they have nowhere to put it. We've offered them dog treats, dog boxes, catchpools, leashes, collars, slipleads, microchip readers, digital infrared thermometers, so when they get called out to go to Walmart, they can put it like in the crack that these people are leaving open at 100 degrees because animals are dying in the state. And right now, if you leave your dog in a car out there and it dies of heat exhaustion, you're not charged with a felony. So we're not messing with summary citations anymore. As of last August, the laws have changed. I need, I actually can be sworn in as a humane officer. Again, it would be a volunteer position. I'm not going to make any money and I have no problem going out and assisting the PD. The problem will be if I get sworn in, I am only allowed to write summary citations. So I'm going to need our officers to be able to assist me if there is a misdemeanor or a felony charge. We had an issue a couple weeks ago where a resident moved out, left a couple cats behind, but instead of leaving them inside the house, she put them out and they knew it. The neighbors were willing to witness and state those were her cats, okay? At that point, it's called abandonment under the PA Crimes Code. We need these people charged because when we allow them to continue to do this, it's ending up everyone else's problems. That particular woman couldn't even let her dogs out. They're her dogs. It's her property. But there's five cats sitting on her porch that the people dumped next door. Those cats have been fed, watered. They don't know what to do, you know, and it's not their fault. And this whole town is like that. So maybe something where we could put, I mean, I don't know where I would go to actually maybe the landlords in this town and we know who they are because there's a somewhere that says these people in this house and it is a rental property. Maybe make it a policy for the borough that these landlords are putting something in there where they need to see rabies and license for these animals. Cats indoors must also have rabies through the Department of Agriculture. We have to do something with the tenants in this town, especially, especially the rental properties, because they're leaving behind animals and our departments are not charging these people. They need charge or it's not going to stop. And so when they leave them out, it then becomes everyone's problem. Where if we could nip it in the bud, when they're dumping them and get them charged, even if it is a summary citation, five summary citations of animal cruelty on someone's record, the next landlord's going to know, "Don't let them have animals." You know, we have to be a little bit more proactive and I'm not, like I said, I'm not coming in here trying to be nasty or negative or rotten. We're buried. I don't think you can tell that, like I'm beat, I'm exhausted because we deal with this all over the state, not just here, but I'm here and I'm willing to help. So if anyone has any suggestions to it in ring parts, I apologize, I forgot them, I ran off the door, but our organization is online, One Dog at a Time, O-D-A, give me a holler, we're always willing to assist. Okay? And thank you so much for letting me talk for a minute. Well, 10 maybe, sorry. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Approval of award bid for Falk Road and Shands and Fluke Bay for the CDBG project in the amount of $163,361.64.
Okay, so this is for the paving on Spring Street and the 3, 4, 500 block of South Wayne Street. There were two bids submitted, one from Hawbakers in the amount of $178,678 and one from Falk Roads in the amount of $163,361.64. So we're looking for approval so we can let the county, the commissioners gave their authorization on last Thursday and we're looking for approval to go forward with this and get the paving going on so we can complete it this fall. This is CDBG money.
Mr. Council's wishes. Your motion to award a bid for Falk Road and Shands?
I'll make a motion.
How's that going?
That was a low spin. By $15,000.
Motion may, property second question. All those in favor, give it to Tim for saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Joe Gary. Christina Milligan, here? Okay, approval of the consent agenda. Anybody see anything in there they want to discuss separately? At night, I accept the motion to approve it. Your motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm looking at item E1. In fact, your request had came in late and was approved in between meetings.
The AAA approached me, Frank, about using, I think it was a total of 10 spaces right behind the AAA office for, they had a customer appreciation day where they did shredding and they needed some space for their shredding machine. It was after the meeting, so I called up Mr. Seer and got his blessing for the approval to let them use those 10 spaces.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? Your motion to approve it. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hold on a second.
Motion may, property second question. All those in favor, give it to Tim for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Joe Gary.
I'll need to abstain. I have item C4 for general, I don't play a bit with the natural law.
Okay.
As a side note, you all know that the bridge is now open. East Charles Street is now open.
Okay, Treasurers Report.
So there was the calculation worksheet for our MMO, our municipal minimum obligation was uploaded on the website for council to review. The MMO is our expected financial obligation for the upcoming year for our pension plan and the law requires that the governing body of the municipality of the pension plans are informed of the obligation by the last business day of September. The calculation of the 2019 plan cost requires an estimate of the 2018 W-2 wages of the employees that are covered by the plan. The MMO is the municipality's 2019 bill for the pension plan. The calculated obligation must be paid by December of the next year. The obligation must be met with either general fund monies or with any general state aid that we would get to the municipal pensions to which we might be entitled to under the Act 205. So what I'm looking for tonight is council's approval acknowledging the receipt of the 2019 MMO obligation for the borough's non-uniform pension plan and uniform pension plan.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion may, property second question. All those in favor, give it to Tim for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Joe Gary.
The next thing I have is, we received a letter from the Tax Plan Bureau notifying us that an offer had been received for 8 Peter Avenue in the amount of $483 and I would need council's approval in order to accept that. It was in the repository for unsold properties. It had been owned by Wagner and Richard Dean is making the offer.
Mr. Council's wishes. Your motion to accept the proposal?
I assume they're going to renovate the property and bring it back out to code.
That I don't know. I just know that he, you know, they sent two addresses on it.
What's the condition of that property, Greg?
It's in bad shape. The guy, hoping to get it to buy it. It will fix it up to make it a rental property.
What about the current owner?
Current owners are deceased.
No estate?
Well, that's a long story. There wasn't a lot to put them in, but the families, their stepchildren and nobody could get together, so they just walked away from it.
I'll make the motion and we accept the offer.
Hold on a second.
Motion may. Anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Question? All those in favor, give it to Tim for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Joe Gary.
And the last thing I have is, we received a letter from the Board of Assessment Appeals regarding a list of per capita exoneration to bid by our tax collector. The initial letter from Aaron Anawal stated that the per capita tax bills were undeliverable and returned to her by the post office every year. The letter states she had been recording every per capita bill returned to her since she began collecting in 2014 and none of the per capita bills have been collected for a minimum of three and a half years. She would like to have them exonerated and removed from the tax rolls. What are council's wishes?
Wait, this is from 2014? I mean, they came back, returned, or?
Since then. But every year since then is my understanding of that letter.
Aaron's here. They've been returned every single cycle, so not just the last four and a half years. Like the last nine cycles in a row, they've all been returned to me and we've never ever collected those taxes. And it's, I mean, my goal was the saving of my own postage, the envelope, the printing, everything like that. We have to pay to have those printed mail, everything, every year.
Nothing on Google tracking to find out where they're at now or anything, get an address?
I'm not sure how that would even be possible.
Well, anybody who uses Google, you can find them.
Okay, wow. I mean, some of the people on the list are deceased, a lot of them have gone without accounting. We just have no idea where they are. They did reassessment last year, so if they were going to find the people, I think they would have found them then.
How much is it?
$3,430, but that's 50% of that, right, Aaron? 50% of that?
Right, yeah, the borough, that's only, that's the full amount of the tax the borough gets off.
That's the occupation tax, is that what it is?
Okay.
Mr. Council's wishes.
Once, once they go delinquent, they go to the delinquent collector. Is it the procedure for the delinquent collector to ask for the exoneration?
That's what I would think.
That's what I would think.
I mean, that's how it's handled in other tax situations.
Yeah, once, once a tax collector doesn't collect it by the end of the year, those delinquents are turned over to the delinquent collector, which in this case would now be Keystone, and Keystone would have to ask for the exoneration for collecting the delinquent bills. That's what MIFCO always did before.
I'm not asking for exoneration. I'm asking for the exoneration of the current bills, which will remove them from the tax rolls in the future. I'm not asking for exoneration of old past bills.
What do you do there, Mark?
I don't know, I'll take some, some looking. I'm not sure.
I mean, is that a job for the assessment office to look in there?
That's kind of what I would think. They're the ones who set out, send out the tax rolls.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to them to clean up the rolls, not us.
Well, the county commissioner's approved it already.
I'm looking into it some more, I really don't know.
I said we table that.
Okay, we'll leave this to the next meeting.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself a little bit. I should have asked before we went into our regular agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to bring before council, before we continue on? Okay. Track code enforcement.
Last month, there were 72 violations. The biggest one was 54 of those for course grass and weeds. We did condemn five properties last month. As far as permits, this year we did issue 25 zoning permits compared to 58 last year. Those zoning permits come out to $1,962.96 in fees compared to last year of $9,762.75 in fees. And this year we issued 17 sidewalk permits compared to 26 last year, which this year come up to $2,126.64 in fees compared to last year, that was $970. And that difference is probably bigger sidewalk jobs possible. Total year-to-date permit fees was $64,414.97. And I didn't, don't have last year numbered ever because it'd be way out of whack compared to the big hits we had this year for zoning fees. But year-to-date, construction-wise in the borough has been $6,888,261 worth of improvements. And then there was one loan letter issued last month from FEMA. Did you also, I think, have at your place a letter that's called receipt? Do you have a copy of that?
From FEMA.
From FEMA?
You do not. I think it was.
Our ratings stay the same. Residents get a 10% discount for what we do in our office for the flood relief.
Any questions for the code enforcement officer? Okay, Fire Chief.
Fire department ran 26 alarms. There's no significant damage by the fires, but the rescue teams have been busy. Labor Day weekend, two days in a row, city rescue ran calls with major injuries where they had to cut the vehicles apart to get the patients out. One of them's kind of rough. In fact, Monday, I'm going to critique about that one. We had four people who traveled in one vehicle. Took about 28 minutes to cut them out. Fortunately, everybody survived, even though there's some serious injuries. We spent a few days earlier this week getting ready for drains and possible flooding at all three stations. Scott took pumps out, made sure it was running. Scott parked off the salvage for roof leaks. Both boats were in to make sure everything was okay. And we're going to continue to do this with a possible storm coming up next week, so we're doing everything we can to prepare for the storm. We'll be ready for it.
Any questions?
I just want to thank you, Chief. We, we didn't realize that Lake Raystone was going to open up their dams last night, so.
They're opening them against the day too.
I talked to Tim, talked to the chief. We were going to be a little proactive and just had the chief tie up the boat ramp so we didn't lose it this time. But they had a bunch of guys down there. Tim, how many, did you manage to bring it in?
I brought two guys in and the chief had probably 25 guys, his own guys there and we thought the boat would launch out in 25 minutes.
Yep, the boat launch was saved and it's now put away for the winter. We figure what would come in, the water's not going to get to level, we're going to need that boat launch again. So thank you, Chief. Appreciate your help last night.
Any questions for Fire Chief? Please, Chief.
There were statistics for last month. August, we did 292 calls for service, 42 traffic citations, 37 non-traffic citations. Total for those was $6,683, 186 parking tickets and total revenue for that was $2,400. Update on the server. The hardware has been installed at the station. We're currently in the transition phase from the old server to the new one. It's transitioning all the data from the old server that's taking place right now. Seems to be going well so far and probably within another year or so, we'll have completely transitioned over to the new server. So that seems to be going well. Just an update on, we had a couple of major incidents in the last month. We had a shooting on West Fourth Street. Some excellent work by our officers as well as cooperation with PSP and the other local departments. So far, we've made three arrests in that incident and possibly more to follow. As a result of that, we did some saturation details with PSP, which like helped lead to one of the arrests we made. So we appreciate all our cooperation and help with that and we will be conducting more of these operations in the future, PSP and the other local departments to try to increase our presence in the borough, police presence and, you know, deal with some of the issues we're dealing with. Another major incident we had just this past week was one of our officers was a victim of an attempted shooting. He was not struck fortunately. Um, he was not struck, fortunately, and not injured. Um, and the suspect was arrested shortly thereafter. And different kind of region was handled in that incident, and, uh, it made the arrest fairly quickly, so. Uh, again, a lot of cooperation between departments, and, uh, that was not related in any way to the other shooting. That's all I have for now.
Any questions for the police chief?
Yes. Um, I was sort of curious to see, because I've been sort of watching the paper, but when there is an incident that happens in our town, um, is there, I mean, normally, there's an incident report made, correct? And then it goes, how does it ever end up to the media?
There's a public information release that's done for every incident. That's part of their reporting requirements, that they fill out a public information release. Of course, some information cannot be released to the public, depending on what the incident is, and, you know, what, what all it involves, and what, what the victims.
So, if it's something that is under investigation, is it where it, here's the, here is the incident I'm talking about. Driving down, it's Market, right, where Bon Ton is? Driving down Market, the one-way part, just that small portion before you get on your way going over Burnet. Driving down the street, I see a toddler in a, in a, in a diaper with buck boots on. Well, I'm going, okay, there's a little kid playing on the sidewalk, that's, you know, except I looked again, and then I looked again, and there was no people, like, no big people. I pulled over, I tried to speak with the toddler, he was non-verbal, he couldn't tell me his name, he couldn't tell me where he lived, he couldn't tell me where his mom and dad lived, who his mom was, there were no doors open anywhere. I haven't seen anything about this incident, and that's why I'm concerned. Because truthfully, um, that little boy was dead right now, had I not got out of the vehicle, and then another lady stopped to help me with the child, because he was on a mission. And if you've ever seen a little kid that doesn't want picked up, this was him. He was, like, chugging down the road, but if we would not have guided him to stay onto the side, like, I was afraid to pick him up, he'd start screaming, bloody murder, and people would think I was kidnapping him, right? Um, but, long story short, if she and I would not have been there, this kid would've been dead, squashed on that road, absolutely no doubt in my mind, at ten to ten in the morning. The people, nonchalant, I was, like, we waited for the police, this kid made it blocks away from his house, and we followed and tried to slow him down, or he could've been, who knows where. And I want to make sure that A is being investigated, I want to make sure that, you know, it's been handled, or being handled.
No, I can assure you, the officers responded, it was investigated, uh, they were working with children and youth services to determine what, you know, action needed to be taken.
Right, because the gentleman, th- this is no joke, so the police get there, and I offered to let, have the, I said, I have a lollipop in my purse, because we put the little kid in the car, and there's all kinds of neat stuff for him to play with, and they said, don't make it a lollipop for him, maybe that'll keep him busy, not that everything won't be sticky. And I walked the whole way back past the house that the kid came from, but I didn't know he came from, and the gentleman walks out of the door, nonchalantly, he looks around, then he walks down the stairs, and they said, do you have any idea who has a toddler, little boy? I said, he's in a diaper, and, oh, that's my girlfriend's baby, he gets out all the time. Now, I'm used to dealing with stray dogs, don't get me wrong, but a stray child that gets out all the time? So, I just wasn't sure, like, I didn't see anything in the paper, and I was just concerned that, you know, I, I wanted to make sure somebody, all the time?
I'm sure it was investigated, I can't speak directly to that incident, I don't know the specifics of it, but.
I appreciate it, because I just wasn't certain how, what, like, what the process was for it to actually make it to the paper.
Well, like I said, they're required to do a public information release, it depends on the incident and what occurred, so. You're not gonna see every incident in the paper, but, you know, most of the stuff that we can release to the public, we do.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the police chief? Okay, Mark.
Clean advertise for adoption and ordinance that expands the, um, inspection and other requirements with regards to boarding houses, rooming houses, hotels, motels, et cetera. Um, they've always had to be inspected, but the new ordinance, um, has, has kind of beefed up the requirements for these types of establishments, including designation of a local manager, maintaining a register, um, et cetera. And we've also added in there some, uh, requirements that bed and breakfasts and, um, Airbnbs have permits, inspections, and, uh, like, rooming houses have to comply with the county hotel tax and the Pennsylvania state sales tax. Um, I know this arose because of some, uh, incidents that the chief brought to, uh, council and law and ordinance, I don't know if you want to address any of those, chief?
Yeah, a lot of the problem was, especially in regards to rooming houses, boarding houses, is we had no access to the house to determine who was in what room in the house, and that caused some problems for us. As far as, uh, in certain legal circumstances, you know, serving search warrants and so forth, we need to know the exact residence of the person, which would be their exact room in that, within that residence, so. Um, it was creating a problem like that for us as far as law enforcement's concerned. Just as a side note to that, um, just in the discussions here, and because of, you know, the information that has gotten out to the public, one of the landlords that we were dealing with, we had issues at one boarding house voluntarily, started opening things up and cooperating more with us, which was very helpful, and especially in these recent incidents we had, one of the shootings we had on West Fourth Street, so. Um, it's already showing some results, even just from the landlord voluntarily complying, and, you know, knowing that this ordinance may be coming, sort of helping us out that way, so. This is already proving to be somewhat helpful.
What's council wishes on your ordinance?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
May, may probably second to adopt the new ordinance, rooming house ordinance. Rule call, any questions? Rule call.
Ian Shae?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Frank Barrier?
Yes.
Phil Wilson?
Yes.
Darius here.
Yeah. Anything else, Mark? Borough manager.
Okay, um, first thing on my list is finance committee, this is, we've gone five years without an appraisal. It's, the appraisals used for our land, building, and equipment, mostly in the insurance quoting end of the borough. So, we needed to update our appraisal, finance committee recommended I get an appraisal, which, we went with the industrial appraisals, we contacted them, they're the ones that did our appraisal before, they have all our information, they have all the data, they came back with a price of seventy-seven hundred and sixty dollars for the appraisal. So, I'm looking for approval to move forward with the appraisal of our land, buildings, and equipment.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
Motion may probably second, question? All those in favor give her consent, say an aye. Motion, show care.
Okay, the next thing I have on my list is, um, the pricing for our gas consumption. And we've been looking at this in finance for the last couple of months, and we just got our, the latest update today at, it was like four o'clock, uh, maybe three-thirty. And we are currently at three twenty-seven a DTH, um, and the proposal is for three twenty-two per DTH for the next two years, so it'll lock us in through the end of October two thousand and twenty. So, we, we, Mark and I looked at this, we did get another, um, opinion on this from a company called Dominion Energy Solutions, and they're out, um, through March of twenty at point four six eight, point four six eight for CCF, and for two years, they're at point four eight five for CCF. This current rate of, um, three twenty-two is point three three four, so it's a considerable difference in pricing. So, it's, um, it's a recommendation to get this approved, so we can lock these gas prices in for the next two years.
I'll make a motion.
Motion may probably second, question? All those in favor give her consent, say an aye.
Aye.
Other? Show care.
Okay, while we're talking energy, I wish I had a crystal ball, I don't have a crystal ball, if we had a crystal ball, we, we could all be making a lot of money, or geniuses, whichever way you want to look at it. But we locked in our energy pri, our electric prices through the end of October, twenty-one, through the end of October twenty twenty-one, which was a sixteen percent savings on what we were paying before, which was a substantial amount of money savings. I'm throwing out price, we've been looking at this, which is ten point three percent below the sixteen percent savings price, which would take us out to, well, it'd be thirty-six months on top of our commitment, so it would take us out to, like, November of twenty-three. Ten point three percent savings, which would be a savings of approximately forty-one thousand dollars. So, Mark and I had been shooting some emails back and forth, and, you know, the one thing about a municipality is, the only way we can generate revenue is to raise taxes, so anything that we can do which prevents raising taxes is a good thing. So, like I said, the, the current rate we have is a sixteen percent savings on top of the old rate, the new rate is another ten percent savings on top of that. The few companies that responded, and I gave these rates to, they said, you know, we can't touch that, that's a really good price, so there's gotta be something wrong with the price. And that, that is the GRT, that's the grocery receipts tax on top of that. So, our current rate is point oh five seven eight with the GR, including the GRT, the new rate is point oh five one eight six. So, I'm looking for some directions, some guidance, if you're happy with that rate, I would recommend approving it. Uh, that is, I didn't compare, that is Apple's dam.
Is that IGI, or is that ADP?
This is IGS.
Okay.
The new rate is?
The new rate would be point oh.
But it's, that's IGS?
Yes.
That's fixed.
That is fixed, yep.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion may probably second.
Another question.
Yep, Frank.
Your current rate is September, October of twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty, oh, okay, twenty twenty?
Yep.
Is there any penalty for breaking that contract?
No, we're not breaking it, we're adding on to it.
No, there's, is it with the same company?
No, that contract will end October thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Right.
This new contract starts November first, twenty twenty.
Oh, okay.
Different company, at a much better rate.
November first, twenty twenty?
Right.
That's why I said.
So, in other words, you're making a commitment now for two years out?
It's actually thirty-seven months. So, we're gonna, we're gonna actually stake, start from November first, twenty twenty, go out another thirty-seven months.
So, that's two years from now?
Three, three.
Three in a month. No, this is twenty eighteen. Those years from now. Two years from now, we would start getting a lower rate, ten percent lower than what we have.
For another thirty-seven months.
Right.
So, thirty-seven months from November first, twenty twenty.
Right.
Out thirty-seven months. So, it's basically through the end of November, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Seems like a long way out there, I hope I live to see it, but, besides the fact, it's locking in some really good savings for the borough as far as their energy usage, which is the third, well, depending on healthcare, whatever happens there, it's either the second or third largest expense.
Any other questions? All those in favor give her consent, say an aye. All right, both? Okay.
Okay, um, hang on here, just to review the financials, this would be a high overview, just to let you know through, where you are through the end of August. General Borough, um, is up four point nine six percent in revenue, they're down fourteen point one eight percent in expenses. And so, the bottom line, revenue over expenses, you're at seven sixty-eight oh nineteen this year versus four nineteen six ninety-seven last year, an increase of forty-five percent. Uh, refuse, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, three fifty-six in revenue, seven fifty-nine, six ninety-four revenue last year, increase of six point six percent. Um, the expenses are up eight point five percent, we're at six forty-one, three oh eight versus five eighty-six, five forty-four. Uh, some of that was due to the retirement of one of, uh, our, our long-term employees, and we had some payouts that we had to make. But the bottom line is, we're exactly where we were last year, and it was a good year, we're at one seventy-two versus one seventy-three, so we're down point six percent in, uh, refuse revenue. Wastewater collection, revenues, uh, million one forty-six versus a million one oh two, which is a three point eight percent increase in revenue. Expenses is, is eight sixty, eight hundred and sixty thousand versus seven eighty-one, or a nine point two percent increase. The total revenue over expense is down twelve percent, we're at two eighty-five.
Call some John Baumgartner.
Twelve, two eighty-five nine versus three twenty-one five. Um, you know, some of that, we did some, we had a retirement which we had to pay out, we moved, uh, somebody down there for a couple of months for training. And then, the other thing, the component of collection is, we pay for our wastewater treatment out of collection. So, it always runs, depending on what happens with wastewater treatment, it always runs about, it runs a year behind. So, that has the additional payment for wastewater treatment, that's why the expenses are down. And so, wastewater treatment, with that being said, the revenue's up eight point one percent, because there was an increase from Dairy and Granville and Lewis down into the wastewater treatment plant. Expenses are down five point four percent, total revenue is at one twenty-eight this year, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand versus down ten thousand last year. And so, totally, for those main areas, you're looking at, um, five million four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars versus five million one hundred and nineteen, so that's a five and a half percent increase. Expenses are at four million sixty-eight thousand versus four million two fourteen, down three point six percent expenses. Totally, we're at a billion three fifty-four eight versus nine hundred and four nine, or a thirty-three percent increase. Any questions on where we are?
Any questions for the bond banker?
I got a couple more things.
Oh.
I know, I, uh, I know, I, it's a, it's, I got a letter from Jenny Barron down at the Chamber. I told her I'd bring this up to your attention, and I, you can decide what you want to do, if anything. Uh, it's concerning Dave, Dave Knox. She's, so she's thinking about Dave and his impact on our community, he was so passionate about trying to develop the river into an attraction. Oh, yes, the Locust. He told me stories about trying to get the U.S. Corps of Engineers to raise the level of river for more boarding options. He was a player for sure, so I was wondering if we could include his name in a small way on the River Walk, like, on benches, or special area, like an Everlook over the water, or some, or something. Of course, some of this is motivated by his commitment to the Visitors Bureau, he resigned last year, and I would venture to guess that he joined at our beginning fifteen years ago. To honor his steadfast belief in this community would mean a lot to me, our board members, and then any others. What do you think? I'd be happy to bring this up for Funding Bureau, our Board of Directors, but new, I need the borough's blessing first. So, I bring this letter to your attention to see what your thoughts are.
So, I take that they're offering to. So I take that they're offering to buy a venture or something in honor? If we okay it, we'll do that.
I think it's fantastic.
I don't see any problem with it.
Dave is definitely a good guy in our community, that's for sure.
So do you want to, so advance?
Well, I mean, whatever they, they pay for it.
Okay, well, I get with her, and so you guys?
Yep.
Okay.
That might be something the Rec Board would want to look into, a more comprehensive plan to, to put benches, to dedicate benches, that type of thing on that River Walk, rather than, you know, just a scatter trial approach. I mean, I don't know the act.
No, there, it's, it's all in the plan, the benches are.
It's in the plan?
Yeah, the benches are being taken care of out of our grant money.
Okay.
And then we're gonna, we got approval from the Marshalls Fund to do the garbage cans. We're gonna, Tim doesn't know that yet, but he's gonna be putting in the garbage. And we're doing some of the landscaping, we're putting the signs in, so, I mean, we could.
So we could dedicate the benches then?
You could dedicate the benches, but they're fairly salty. You might want to just, what do you mean?
You're talking about just putting a plaque on it, right, Frank?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, you already have the benches.
Well, they're gonna have to be a different kind of bench. I mean, they, they just changed the style of them, so it.
You gotta put a plaque on the benches.
Well, they, they're do more benches, so you don't want to just, they actually make a bench that has, did you see the ones up at the fountain? Yeah, they're actually, it's, the whole thing is made where you put the plaque right in it.
Right.
So you can't do it after the fact?
I mean, I guess you could, but I'm just talking about for something that's gonna hold up.
Right.
I'll see what Jenny wants to do. Okay, so I got the final report from Wiltz Vending. So they made sixty-nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. That, they were sailing along until the last week of July, and then Venus was going down there. Then it started to rain, and it didn't stop raining, and the weather got cold, and then it rained some more. But, so they were at the, on July the twentieth, they were fifty-six, forty-eight, and they ended up at sixty-nine, fifty-two. Originally, we had talked about giving them, taking them down to five percent. Mr. Wilt, after, we had a discussion shortly after a meeting that we had in finance, he thought that he was fine with the ten percent, so they're gonna be sending us a check for six hundred and ninety-five dollars. So we'll be getting that to help offset this. That was good. And I, last thing, as Venus said, the bridge is open, so that's a good thing. If you haven't had a chance to go down to the Chestnut Street South High Road section, you need to do that because that's a beautiful thing. They want to continue that same wood tie effect right out Chestnut Street. And I imagine after they get done with that, we're gonna work a lot to do Water Street, where it's the concrete stuff, because you've gotten that same ridge effect from all the ties in Water Street.
Is there, I think we discussed this before, so forgive, is there a date for Chestnut Street?
They're gonna knock off probably another three years. They're gonna do a third, a third, a third, it's roughly eight hundred feet. So when that's, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's, you know, hopefully it's gonna hold up much better than, hold up in the past. And the walking trail, I was a little concerned because last night with that twenty-six point three feet peak in the water was gonna be about a foot over the walking trail. So I would, you know, I was concerned how long it was gonna take to dry out, but now at twenty-one, seven, you know, we've got a little bit of a cushion.
Did they account for the letting out of race towns or not when they made that prediction?
They did last night.
Did they?
Yeah, they did. But I, you know, did you know that was gonna happen? The race, they were gonna let that much water out of race town block?
Probably after the fact.
Yeah. Yeah, when they do that, I mean, you saw how quickly that river went up, right, Tim?
Yeah.
So, but then the walking trail, we're looking at the middle of October to have it completed, and then we'll have a dedication ceremony shortly thereafter.
You're done? Any question for Board Manager?
Yeah, what, what, what's the feet that affects the walking trail with the river? How many feet is it?
The, the walking trail is at thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Well, that's over flood. Is it, isn't that over flood stage, isn't thirty-one our flood stage?
Yeah, I mean, that's, and the only reason I've known that is because I was looking at that concrete tower that they have down there with the feet on it, and I'm looking at thirty-six, which is, it's about that high above the trail. And I'm thinking, this is not good.
When are we done next week? Or the end of this week to go through here?
Well, I know, I, I mean, we're not out of the woods by any stretch of imagination because there's another storm behind Florida, so we'll see where that all goes.
Yes, yes, there's two of them.
But one's gonna go more.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions for Board Manager?
You promise?
No, I told you I don't have a crystal ball.
Okay, on finishing your business. Prove budget revisions to the Borough of Lewis Town's twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen CBPG for ADA ramps with turncaded domes and South Wayne Street reconstruction and Spring Street reconstruction for County's resident.
So Kim, do you want to explain this? You want me to?
I'll, I'll explain if you don't mind, Mr.? This is a revision to the award for the South Wayne and Spring Street projects. The county is the grantee, so Commissioners approve the resolution. We want to get Borough Council approval. There's no necessity to have a separate additional resolution. Basically, what it is, is that the South Wayne Street reconstruction project was funded in twenty fifteen, sixteen, and the Spring Street project was funded in twenty seventeen in the amounts of thirty-six thousand, seven twenty-four, forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars respectively. Projects were awarded this evening. The bid was awarded to Jake Fulkward, Roden Sons, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, three sixty-one, sixty-four. This came in over budget of six thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-four cents, so we need to move some funding around. As of four actions, we're asking you to approve and allow us to submit this paperwork. The DCD would be to decrease the ADA ramps project in twenty fifteen in the amount of nineteen thousand, one eighty-eight, ninety-three, increase the South Wayne Street project in the amount of nineteen thousand, one eighty-eight, ninety-three, decrease the twenty sixteen South Wayne Street project in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight oh nine, fifty-five, and add the twenty sixteen Spring Street project in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight oh nine, fifty-five. Another reason why, and I'll defer to the Borough Manager, is we don't need all that money for the ADA ramp projects. He came up with an alternative methodology which is gonna save money on the project. So there's, we want to get rid of the fifteen funds first, so they're the reasons for the budget revision.
Council wishes, you want to provision? Do you have a motion to approve?
You don't make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made properly second. Question? All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both? Approval to reappoint Lisa Knights into Civil Service Commission?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made properly second. Question? Roll call, please.
Ian Shade?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Frank Barrier?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
Larry Seale?
Yes.
Prove the release twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen CBPG funds for advertising for South Wayne Street. Invitation for bids.
This amount is seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents. For, this is where the, the county advertised this further proposal for the bids.
Council wishes?
Make a motion to approve the release of the funding.
I'll second it.
Motion made properly second. Question? All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
No care. Approval to release twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen CBPG funds for engineering services for Monument Square Streetscape project.
There's actually two invoices here from the Eats Group in regards to Phase Five of the Monument Square Streetscape project. One of them is seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, and the other one is four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Council wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the release of funding. For discussion.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made properly second. Question?
Okay, what, what particular part of the Streetscape project is this?
This is the Phase Five, which is out Main Street from the alley at the Embassy, down to the Water Street intersection, and Water Street over towards the managed senior apartments. We're gonna fight into their improvements.
That'd be both sides of the street on water or just one?
Both sides.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's a full sidewalk on the lower side, but I'm fairly certain it is.
Any other questions? All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both? No care. Frank, you're up on Law and Ordinance?
Okay, two items here. I'm gonna go to item two first, approval to advertise a sign ordinance. I just received that today. I was out of town last week, and I would prefer that the committee review it, discuss it in our next meeting, and if anybody else on Council, you should have it. It was released to everybody. If there's any questions, let us know. So for that, I'd like to just push off for a month.
Okay.
The other had to do with Mr. Conley's request to remove part of the sidewalk. Excuse me?
This is second month in a row, this has been pushed off.
I still didn't hear you.
I said this is second month in a row, this has been pushed off.
Do you want to make a motion to prove it?
Yeah, I looked at it, I'd make a motion to prove it.
Okay.
Motion made to approve it, is your second?
I'll second it.
Motion made second. Roll call, please.
Ian Shade?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Frank Barrier?
No.
Bill Wilson?
No.
Larry Seale?
No.
You're the goal meeting.
So do you have to have a special meeting, Mark, or do you have to come back and be postponed for this month?
I've got it right now.
You have to have a special meeting.
Frank, while he's looking that up, you want to go ahead with number one there?
Sure. We had a request by Mr. Conley on, what, Lombardi Center? To remove part of his sidewalk. He lives at the end of a street. His sidewalk is at the end of the, it'd be the last house with a sidewalk. And he wanted to remove part of his sidewalk which, which fronts the street and plant grass there. That, that prompted the Law and Ordinance to look at our ordinances in regard to sidewalks. And having Mr. Remmy look into it, it appears as though the borough has no requirement that you have a sidewalk in front of your property. That said, any resident in the borough who would desire to remove their sidewalk and plant grass there could probably do it. That, that, that's what it appears to be. Am I correct on that, Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of strange. I was surprised when I read the sidewalk ordinance that it doesn't have a provision saying everybody fronts on a borough street shall install and maintain a sidewalk. There's some language in section two twelve dash twenty-five that is, I think everyone on the Law and Ordinance Committee agreed, somewhat murky. What it says is upon written notice and order by the department, the owner of a property which abuts a borough street or which abuts a state highway in the borough where sidewalks, where curbs are required or permitted by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, shall construct such sidewalks and curbs within the right of way as they're directed by the borough. So I, I think there was an intent by the borough to require that if you abut a borough street, or if you abut a Penn Dock Road and you're given notice, you have to construct a sidewalk or you have to maintain it. So I, I think though that, you know, I looked at some other places like Carlisle Borough that have a clearer, clearer language as to what is actually required. And my thoughts or recommendations would be send it back to Law and Ordinance Committee to determine what kind of improvements we can make to the sidewalk ordinance to make sure it's clear to everybody what is and is not required in the borough. But I think the thought was, this is an issue that the committee didn't really want to tackle unless there was a general feeling on for a council that it's something that for a council wanted to address and felt was important to change or address at this time.
Well, Law and Ordinance set it aside rather than writing a new ordinance just to see what council's attitude was on this. We really felt that the whole board should decide whether or not Law and Ordinance should, in fact, write an ordinance that says you should have a sidewalk before we just went ahead and did it, presented it. So I'd like to know what the board thinks we should do.
My opinion would be wherever there is a sidewalk, it should be maintained.
I mean, some, maybe one idea would be say, you know, as of X date, you know, everywhere that there is a sidewalk should be maintained and kept in good repair. That's one possibility.
So if you don't have a sidewalk, then you won't get paved, right? That's the other point, too.
Right.
That's gonna be my question.
What's that? Yeah, because I think it's Rosemont.
Yes, exactly.
They did stormwater improvements several years back with the intention of eventually paving that, because this is like down below Nutlock Cemetery. None of the improvements have been made, none of the curbs have been put in or the sidewalks put in. So to this date, that street still is pretty much gravel street.
And that's all constant.
And where there's not a sidewalk, you always put a six-inch curb with a mullion. You just put the paving machine. So they're not paving at all, we used to pave, you just put a six-inch curb to back it up so the channels of water going into the inlet.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm speaking for me, not as the Borough Manager, but I think that there has to be some incentive there. I mean, if they want the borough to spend the money that it costs to pave the street, there needs to be a mutual sharing of the responsibilities to them. That's just me personally saying that.
there needs to be a mutual sharing of the responsibilities to them. That's just me personally saying that.
Yes?
Is there not something within the borough limits that states if their sidewalk is cracked or anything that they're responsible to fix their sidewalk?
Correct.
Yes, there is.
So what you're in actuality saying is those people just tear up the sidewalk right now and plant grass and it costs $500,000 to fix it?
That's exactly what Mr. Conley is asking to do.
And really, we have no say in the matter. We have no way to stop it.
Well, he would have to get a permit.
He'd have to get a permit. But it's not prohibited by our ordinance in what he's asking to do.
I think it's less than clear that there is a need to maintain that somewhere. And I think it should be clear what everybody in the borough's responsibilities are towards having or not having sidewalks. It goes beyond, you know, one property.
Right, but it doesn't answer Mr. Conley's request or, you know.
No, but, you know, this is-
It does it away right now. He's not required to have a sidewalk. He needs his sidewalk, no, that's just it.
Well, I'm just sending this back to Law and Ordinance.
I would be too.
You guys come up, yes?
I mean, the only place that I know that sidewalks aren't required are in your subdivision land development ordinance.
Right, if you're gonna, if you're going to create a new subdivision, there is a requirement that the new subdivision would have sidewalks.
If required by council.
Right.
And that's where I believe in the late 60s when this, or whenever this development was created, it was probably a requirement. So for him to remove them, I don't know if, again, I guess it's gotta go back for further discussion, but it is a requirement of your subdivision ordinance. Just like alleys for every lot and things like that, so.
Just to piggyback on what Luke is saying, if you know the history of Pine Park Drive, it was like a sub, a development. But they didn't follow what the requirements for a development. And they didn't put in the curbs, they didn't put in the sidewalks. And then when they came to the borough and asked the borough to take the street over, the borough, Frank, you probably were on council that one, the borough refused to do it.
Yeah, that was several, that was prior to what our council counts.
Yeah, that's true.
And periodically somebody who came from that street wanted the street paved. And it's to no standard at all even paved. I mean, it's graded, balanced, the whole thing. And that should have been done by the developer, but at that point in time, we had no subdivision and land development ordinance and you can just have add it, which is what happens. And I think Rosemont is another example of the same thing.
I mean, it goes on to say in your ordinance, sidewalks shall be required for streets where the following are met. And if they continue existing sidewalks between subdivisions, access to facilities, so on and so forth, so. I'm sure it was a requirement in time for that, you know, for that part of town.
Frank, can I get together with Mark and get something in order here?
You want to grant through Law and Ordinance again then?
Yes.
Is that what you want?
Yes. And that we can straighten this out, so we have a rule in here on this. I mean, I think, is most of council under the impression that if you have a sidewalk, you should maintain it rather than tearing it up or crashing? Is that the general consensus? I mean, I-
Right.
Okay, so come up with, so you got the general consensus of council, so come up with something to approve it.
Okay, we'll take it to Law and Ordinance.
Okay, anything else, Frank?
I'm sorry, I got offside track there and I've got to look at the council.
Mark?
Yeah.
When? Can I move that we take a five-minute recess? About 10 minutes recess, I'm sorry. I think it's a privileged motion. I think it needs a second. Is that correct, Mark?
I have to move that up in Robert's rules there, but I want to look at this about-
I think it's a privileged motion. No, there's no other motion on the table.
Well, there's no other motion on the table.
It's just to clarify what happened here. I just have some questions. Can I make a motion for somebody to reconsider their motion after the vote's been taken, roll call's been called?
Dave, I have to look that up in Robert's rules. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, so. Let me look up this about the vote on the tie vote and then we'll address that.
I mean, this is, that's what it's regarding and I'm trying to kind of figure out a way out of having a special meeting and advertising it and- I have a motion to recess and I don't-
Yeah, if you want to make a motion to recess, I will second that.
And the reason I did that is because I think if we move forward, I think our hands might be tied because there's been other business on the table since. I'm just, I'm not sure, that's why I went that route.
Have you made a motion to recess?
Yes.
And I seconded it. Call the vote, Mark. Take a minute recess.
Motion.
A motion to second, me and his vote.
Take a recess.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I recess?
All right. Five minutes.
Decision. Again, what are we gonna do?
Somebody's gonna make a motion.
I was going to, but I need to know if I'm able to, but after all call has been called.
A reconsideration can be moved only by one who voted yes if the motion involved was adopted or no if the motion was lost. Here the motion was lost because we didn't have a majority. So we have to be someone who voted against it would have to make a motion to reconsider.
So if somebody who voted no would make a motion for want to reconsider the motion of passing the sign ordinance, we could save the cost of advertising for a special meeting in the time and bring it back to the next council meeting after we've had further discussion.
Well, you're basically gonna take another vote on his motion. He voted yes, so he can't make the motion. It would have to be someone who voted no.
Right, we could reconsider the motion.
Right, you could.
We could rescind his motion.
I have a question.
Well, it's already voted on, so you can't rescind it. It would have to be reconsidered.
I have another question.
Yes.
How long prior to a meeting do you have to advertise the ordinance? Where does the act have to be and how many days?
At least seven days before the meeting. So for a Monday meeting, it has to be advertised on the Saturday.
Then you're going to adopt the ordinance.
Right. Seven full days.
If reconsiderment is just to vote on the exact same motion again, I think we would be at the exact same spot we're at now. Is that our only possible action, Mr. Remy?
Yeah, I mean, reconsideration is the parliamentary means to reconsider something that's already been voted on.
Can you make a motion to, instead of having a special meeting, bring the vote up at your next regularly scheduled council meeting?
No, because it is-
Reconsider the motion. The motion was made to advertise the ordinance.
That's a real hint, I think.
Well, if someone who voted no on the original motion wants to make a motion to reconsider and someone in council changed their minds-
Somebody would change their vote.
I mean, I don't know what, you know, obviously you don't know what votes are going to be. I don't think you lose anything by reconsidering them. And you might save yourself a special meeting.
And the cost of advertising.
And I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Can I second that motion since I've already given?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I'll second Frank's motion to reconsider.
Now, basically here, a yes vote will push that back to Law and Ordinance and then it'll be voted on at the next meeting. Is that correct to advertise?
What was the motion, Diana?
The motion was to advertise the ordinance.
Okay.
So a yes vote to reconsider.
Or if someone who voted yes votes no, then it won't be advertised.
So what do we vote? If we don't want to advertise it, do we vote yes or no? I made a motion to reconsider.
Read the, can you read it back, Diana?
Okay, so we need another one to vote no against the ordinance so it gets back to-
Law and Ordinance.
Law and Ordinance for next meeting.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion made, probably second. To reconsider the motion.
Which was to advertise-
To advertise the sign ordinance.
The sign ordinance for the next meeting.
For adoption at the next meeting.
Question? Roll call, Mark.
Nina Shade?
No.
Mark Severs?
No.
Dave Campbell?
No.
Frank Barriere?
No.
Bill Wilson?
No.
Larry Siegel?
Yeah, this is the advertising, yeah, we're taking another vote on the motion.
We take it back to Law and Ordinance then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just let me explain again. I didn't have a chance to review this and that's why I didn't want to send it out for advertising. Okay, I just got this this morning. And I haven't had a chance to review it. I just don't think it's good business to just pass something that you haven't read.
I agree.
I mean, we had a really long discussion over this sign ordinance and there was a lot of stuff we discussed. And I just want to make sure it's as discussed. And if there's anything that we spawed that we don't like, we can take it up to Law and Ordinance and we'll bring it up the next meeting. I mean, I know there's somebody has a sign out there that they want to hang it as soon as possible, but I, government moves slow.
Okay, so we don't need a special meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything eyes under Law and Ordinance, Frank?
I think we have plenty for that.
Sure, it tickles me. Personnel, Bill Wilson.
Are we going into executive for that or what?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We go into executive session to discuss these employment.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead.
Did you have something eyes you wanted to bring up for us, like executive?
No, but it's just the streets, but I'll give that out to this.
Okay, we're gonna turn, we're into executive session. Okay, we're gonna go to meeting back to session. We're gonna get back into Bill Wilson with the report on Personnel Committee.
Okay, the one that we're looking to approve for Street Committee is, uh, I'm sorry, Street Group, is Adam Scott from Rose Town.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Motion made, probably second. Question? All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No care.
Garbage thrower looking to approve is Tobias Harbison from Rose Town.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Question? All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I close.
Aye, second. Approval to, I'll get it, I'll get it.
Part-time parking enforcer, George Pastore from Bellevue.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made, probably second. Question? All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No care. Now, going into-
We have a part-time police officer position.
Oh, I do, okay.
Philip Callahan.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we extend an offer of employment to Philip Callahan for a part-time police officer position that would be continued upon him having his background checked from law.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, probably second. Hire Philip Callahan for part-time police position. Question?
I think it's Philip.
It is Philip.
Oh, Philip, I'm sorry.
It's Philip Callahan.
Just so Diana got that right.
All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No care. Now, we're getting into budget time here and in order to make things a little more convenient, timelife and so on, I'm gonna take Dave Campbell and Mark Severs off the Finance Committee and I'm gonna replace them with Frank Barriere and myself.
Do you have a reason for that?
And I'm also gonna take Dave Campbell off Personnel Committee and replace him with Frank Barriere.
Is there a reason for that?
Pardon?
What's the reason for taking him off Finance when that's-
Time wise.
I don't understand time wise.
Time wise why?
So for the benefit of the meeting, one we can have mercury-
You never asked. What is it?
Well, we, I don't know.
Here again, here, here, here again. What is it?
We change the committees. Anybody else have anything before we?
There you go.
But will we all be notified of when budget meetings are?
When are they?
I don't know much and I'd like to attend.
Well, I don't know.
They're advertised, I'm sure.
They're advertised.
Even for the, okay.
It's a boy, when you confront leadership, this is what happens.
You're chairman, Phil.
Yeah, I can't believe the council from the budget experience and finance background and he doesn't give a timeframe to the public, just so everybody's aware of that.
Absolutely.
Okay, never got an email, never got contacted about it and just totally removes me from the Finance Committee.
It has to do with the two people that confront situations in this community and its backlash from the president of this council for doing so.
Anybody else have anything before God?
Which is why we need new leadership.
Motion we adjourned.
You weren't referred to your second last time, Mr. President.
Motion made, probably second.
You violated council members' rights.
Favor give their consent to say an aye.
You explain the reason for taking me in.